So we go back to the cleaning issue that we did not resolve, and so I need help with that too, trustees. You authorized the hiring for a one-year contract for TCL cleaning, and because you haven't gone forward with this process, I mentioned before, it costs us $2,000 for a full decon of this building because of the coronavirus. You're going to have more cleaning expenses no matter who you use, so you have a certified decon company doing it. Unless you get this resolution that was passed and the PO signed, you get the PO number issued so that we can get on to the one-year contract and avoid individual charges.
So right now, you already sent me the bill and told me the fire department has to pay the bill for this building, and they've already given me the information to pay the bill for this building. So that may be true what you're saying, but you already told me this is the fire department's bill I sent to the fire department.
Which is right.
And they're paying.
I just don't want any, I don't want us to have to spend unnecessarily money outside of the cleaning that you've already approved a one-year contract just because of processes. So what was 29,000 is now 31,000 for the year expenditure. And you don't know when the coronavirus is going to hit you in any of our buildings or our medics or our engines. So I'm worried about that.
So now we're getting into where we need a policy or procedure too.
So.
Possibly.
Question for you, Tracy. You're waiting to issue a PO number based on what for TCL? Tell us what needs to be done.
Based on this piece of paper I just gave you, I only have 24,958.24. I came to you guys with this piece of paper to tell you, we have two POs, the 20, whatever that is for TCL, and the 8,000 for Lowe's, and we only have 24. That will not cover those, that's what I'm saying to you guys. And you said then, you need to go over this list. And so if that's the decision the trustees want to do, then I guess that's what's got to be done. But I'm telling you, most of these bills, except for the last few, have already been paid.
But they have to have legislation showing that they all have to be approved individually.
They, coronavirus doesn't say anything about having legislation for each bill, it only says it's got to happen.
But expenditures, what federal money does.
No, I worked for the federal government for 41 years, Steve.
So what I'm asking you is, Tracy, I ask you, go back to my question so we can work this out.
Okay.
What do you need to make those two POs go?
I need money, Steve, I just told you.
Okay, so you need, when you say you need money, you need codes, correct?
Um.
You need the, you need the, you need the codes, right?
Line item, right, line item.
So, so, so to distribute to these two projects some of the money, the 24,958.24 that you have on the bottom line there, how do I refer to that when I send you the paperwork?
Okay, at the top of the paper on the front, it says account code.
Okay, so I use that account code for that amount of money however I decide to distribute it.
Well, you know how you do those PO, those forms you give me?
Yeah.
That's the account code you would use, and then I will create a PO.
So then you need the additional monies.
Right.
From some other code, okay.
Correct.
All right, so the 18th is the date that you say you want all invoices.
Well, the reason why I chose the 18th is because of this coronavirus issue, and we got to get that closed out. But I'm saying just a regular, everyday invoice I'd need by the 18th.
I'll have this to you by the 18th.
Okay.
And I will send it out to the trustees to what I recommend. Since you've already authorized the purchases, we have to go through and figure out how to pay for it. You can't, unless you resend them. Then it's up to you trustees, otherwise, I have to carry them through. So I will send you what I decide to do and took home how to address it. Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, that's my report. Oh, yeah, that's my report.
Motion to adopt. This is the report, pay the bills, invoices appropriations and warrants.
Second.
We have motion on the floor to adopt this is the report, give a roll call please, Tracy.
Justin McGloughlin.
Yes.
Justin McGuire.
Yes.
Okay. So next is resolutions.
So before we start, are we going to keep 117 on the budget and go to the next one?
Yes.
No, because we didn't pass it, it's dead. So.
So we're going to do more stuff?
It was tabled to this meeting, and by power metric procedure, it's dead due to Mr. McGloughlin's lack of sanity.
So we're going to make this next one 117?
So we have to either schedule a budget meeting, or I guess shut down the township. Which would you like, Mr. McGloughlin?
Next one's number 117. Resolutions for consideration, the next one will be Resolution 2O-117.
We already killed that.
We're going to use 117 again?
No, it's dead. That's, was.
Resolution 2O-118, approving 2020 supplemental appropriation of totaling 3,400, $348,825.
Okay, good. Good. Oh, this is for the.
Loan received from Republic National Bank, approved by Resolution 19-128, paying for the remodeling mounting and two ambulances and a new staff mark. So no deal.
I'm just asking us to put the money in the.
Right fund. Resolution number 2O-119, approving the 2020 transfer of funds totaling $40,500.
Right, put it in the fund so we can use it.
Right. So let's make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2O-118. We have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2O-18, any questions?
This is just cleanup. Every year we have to, have to clean up the budget, and we have to pay the bill so we No. have a transfer of funds in order, so we can keep records of where, you know, where
Roll call please, Tracy.
Justin McGloughlin. we spend money, so we move some money around so we can pay bills.
Yes.
Justin McGuire.
Yes.
All fire.
Motion carries. All fire. Let's make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2O-119.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2O-119, any questions? Give a roll call please, Tracy.
Justin McGuire.
Yes.
Justin McGloughlin.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. So next, we have a Resolution 2O-120, the Justice Intelligence Board trustees give authorization for the fire department to purchase a 2020 Rosenbauer Quick Attack engine for the purchase of $299,000 using Choice Finance Package. We discussed and talked about this in the work session.
That's using Cho's and Finance?
Using, does it state in here which we, we talked about the number one option, correct, Jim?
Yeah, the, just clarification for the record, actually, we had no money down 12-year purchase plan proposed in option one of the community leasing partners.
The 12 years.
Yep. 3%, 3.06% money, no money down.
Let's make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2O-120 with the agreement that Jim just spoke about, clarify which one we're using.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2O-120, any questions?
Was that option one?
Yes. 12 years. Option one has 10, 12, and 15, we picked 12. Roll call please, Tracy.
Justin McGuire.
Yes.
Justin McGloughlin.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Is there paper for us to sign on that?
Well, it requires a fiscal officer to sign the contract. Yeah, there is an application, a just ask completed by and title and date. So who do you guys want to have fill this out and sign it?
Do we need to do it in the meeting?
Well, you can do it now if you want.
Want to sign off on this, Chris?
Okay.
So now, do you have the full packet there, trustee McGloughlin?
No.
Okay. In the resolution, it's got the finance agreement in it.
Yeah.
You guys should have had this in your, yeah, so in the back is the application.
I've got to see it.
Okay. So the purchase order is here, so I guess, I guess we'll start out, just have you guys sign the purchase order, of course, we've got to fill the rest of it out, the purchase order, we can even be checked for the township, and then print the name, we're going to have Jim write his name, you know, and you guys can, that'll be the first part. Tracy, as soon as we're done, you'll get this. And there might be other information. You did get a discount through Sourcewell on this too, so that's why the price was depressed down to 299. So Sourcewell paid off for you guys already.
So what, they just got to letter this thing, and we can have it sitting in the days?
Correct. They've been holding it, they're holding, they're on 30-day hold for the township in case you wanted it. I think there's a couple of those back there, so if you want to do the same, you can do it. If there's anything else, I'll contact both you guys right away. Probably a big application for financial problem in the lease itself, that they'll have to prepare it for us and send to us. something that I can fill out?
Anything.
It just asks for information, it's not a contract, so. All right, so I'll give this to you, Tracy.
Okay, am I not supposed to do?
Now, do you, you have to sign one, Mike? Do you have to sign the agreement on the resolution that you signed, you guys, you have that?
Okay, they'll give it to me.
Okay, okay, just make sure I, if you want me to have that back, or I'll copy that, those pages, and give it to you.
Okay.
If that works.
You want me to keep it and give it to you?
Whatever, I've just got to get it back to Rosenbauer.
Oh, okay.
I've got to fill out that back page, so just do what you got to do and get it to me tomorrow or something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
The finance company is probably going to want to talk to you, Tracy, so when they call, I'll direct them to you.
So you need to copy the resolution and sign it too?
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Fire chief, I'm sure, thanks you.
Okay, next one, be Resolution number 2O-121, I'm kind of curious what we're doing here, this is a repeat of where we did this.
Okay, so what happened was, when this resolution was brought 2015, it was not, I didn't see it for one, and secondly, the dates were messed up, and so what happened was it asked, I'll see if it's in here, I'm looking for, it had November 8th in here, oh, it's at the top, November 22nd was November 8th. And without that complication that screws up payroll, so we changed it to November 22nd, and said November 8th. It screws up payroll and everything because he was already paid for that, and when the resolution was adopted, he was already paid for on November 8th time period, so we moved it to November 22nd time period, so that's what the change is. So we had to do another resolution, as you see, it says it's adopted and updated a resolution to that, so it's basically the same resolution, just changed the date. We discussed it, Steve and I sat with Adrian, and we heard all the complications, there was just too much trouble, so we just said, we can have the resolution back to you guys to approve it.
What's the resolution number on this?
It's number 121.
Move to adopt Resolution number 20-121.
Before I second that, the attachment.
The attachment is at the left, the last page, as he puts them out of order, I think, at the very last page.
This attachment that was in the original resolution?
Yes.
Nothing's changed there?
No. Yes. One thing hasn't changed.
Okay, so it's exactly the same, nothing's changed in the resolution, on record is the date of from November 8th to November 22nd, updating, so nothing's changed.
And then the attachment, this is exempt for this, and that is not exempt. Attachment is an exempt position, not a non-exempt position, Adrian informed us that should be changed as well.
Okay, I'll make a second on the motion. So we have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2O-121, any questions? Roll call please, Tracy.
Justin McGloughlin.
Yes.
Justin McGuire.
No.
Resolution does not carry.
Okay, here's the resolution signed now.
So, so that means Resolution 2O-115 is still in existence then?
And that means that Adrian's going to have to do some extra work to.
Okay.
Correct everything.
Okay, next resolution.
Do you know how we're going to take care of that? Should I tell them?
Trustee, well, trustee's going to have to decide how to take care of it.
Okay.
Because the issues with the existing resolution that was passed, Mr. Wilcox had already been paid his hourly wage plus overtime up until the time that the resolution that he passed, then he gave a $49,000 salary to the person, so extra money is owed to Mr. Wilcox for the year based on the prorated, prorated amount back to November 8th. The additional problem is that you didn't, there is no assistant chief job established prior to the appointment of Mr. Mc, or Mr. Wilcox to that position, so I don't know how you're going to address that problem, because there was no adopted assistant chief's job prior to, and no job description voted on by trustees prior to, and the resolution went through naming an assistant chief without the proper procedure being followed. All those issues without resolution, Adrian can't fix, Tracy can't fix, I can't fix, trustees are going to have to do it by resolution.
So they're going to rip that resolution, everything, and clean it up?
And I'm told that Mr. Wilcox wrote his own resolution and then handed it to whoever else.
What, what do you mean clean it up? What, it's cleaned up?
The procedure when you, in the Ohio Vice Code, when you create a position, you have to create and vote on the position prior to the appointment of any employee to that position.
It seems to be a lot of favoritism, no process, no procedure.
Okay, so.
When you're friends with Mr. McGloughlin, the rulebook goes out.
Okay, so what happened to, who, we got a fire chief, you didn't do that with the fire chief's position either?
Fire chief's position was already established.
Not the position that you guys voted him on, right?
Fire chief's position was already established in the court of, the resolution by the township years ago. And when you adopted job descriptions two years ago, because you tabled last year at the end of the year, you tabled the adoption of job description, so you go back to two years ago, there was no assistant chief job that was adopted. So trustees, you're going to have to fix, figure out how to clean this up and fix it some way somehow before we go and start calculating payments to an employee that is well-deserving, I am sure, but we've, you've got to do it right so you're not giving, underpaying or overpaying the employee.
So in other words, are we going to keep paying him at what? That's the problem.
I don't know, that's going to have to be a decision that legal's going to have to help figure it out.
I mean, he's not going to get paid then, or we're going to keep paying him at what? I'm saying by the time.
I can't make that decision because I don't know.
Well, but there's still got to be, he's still got to be paid. I'm saying by the time the decision is made, he's still going to be paid, or we're going to just not pay him? Because it not only affects Adrian's and paying her, that payroll affects me and the budget at the end of this year too, it's going to mess up our budget. Not only do we not have a budget, but it's going to mess up us closing at the end of the year because the trustees.
That's my point, this has to be fixed by the trustees without legal before we can answer those questions, Tracy, it's not our decision.
I understand it's not a decision.
So we can't solve it ourselves?
I know, but I'm trying to tell them what's going on. I'm going to have issues with closing out the budget this year if you guys don't make a decision. Adrian can't, I mean, legally, I guess, she's not supposed to be paying him that money, so.
Oh, she's already started paying him for a job that doesn't exist.
The resolution stated, the resolution stated we made a job.
On 115, you guys voted on 115.
The signed resolution, the signed resolution states, whereas the trustees want to introduce to the position of assistant fire chief as a permanent salary, full-time position in the Justice and Township Fire Department, so it was created in this Resolution 2O-15.
Not very clean.
But it was created. So it was done, you just, you don't like Wilcox, and you're doing your best to stop this.
No, I don't like the fact that you did not follow procedure, you broke every law and.
I did not.
You're letting him hire.
No, I did not, this has been on, this has been under the table for several months, you knew about it, because I heard comments you made.
The last I heard, it was not on the table.
Yes, it was.
So.
That's why, that's why the date is not correct.
That's because the fire department's making its own decisions with you.
The fire department can't make its own decisions. You don't like it because you're not over it, you want to be in control of everything that happens in this township, you want to be a dictator, and if you're not in control of everything in this township, you don't like it.
Two trustees well at that resolution.
We've opened this resolution in, we made the position of assistant fire chief, set a salary, and it's.
Correct, you just got to figure out how to fix it.
Fix what?
We don't know what to do.
Well, at this point.
We can't make a judgment call what to do back to November 8th.
At this point, right.
You've got police and fire that we have to increase.
The problem is, Mr. McGloughlin, at this point, it's November 8th issue, it's not the issue of whether that's a valid position, it's the November 8th issue. We have, and right now you guys didn't pass that November 22nd, so we now have to get you guys to tell us what to do about paying him his salary.
So we start the salary on the date that this resolution was passed?
On November 8th, is what you're saying.
Right.
But that's the one that's passed.
No, no, this resolution was passed on.
Correct, but it says November 8th.
It says November 8th.
Okay, so, but to do that correction, Jim was the ability to throw this away, so he's bringing this out on the table when man's not here, who seconded it, to do that so he can get this thing thrown out, because you said before, I don't like Wilcox.
I don't like the resolution, because you didn't follow any procedure.
We didn't follow your procedure, we didn't follow your procedure. You were in control of everything that happens in this township.
Well, in any other township, there's going to be an exec board discussion on promoting a candidate.
You went to executive session, you went to executive session, meaning I'm not here with the fire department.
So.
No, so all of it needs to be changed.
And then you can't even get a resolution passed because you got to sneak it in to get it passed.
You got, look who's talking! You're looking at, you, you, you're not going to be throwing stones, you live in class house, dude.
If I want.
Is resolution ready to develop this, the resolution with Mr. Lutz? Who pulls stuff out of your butt at the end of the meeting?
What's your lawyer cleaning up, Mr. McGloughlin?
Okay, so the only thing that really needs changed here is the change from the date from November 8th to the date that this was signed.
You can't change a resolution that's been voted upon, move on.
Yep, we do that. That was, that was tabled, we're not going to get voted out, vote yes or no, so we're not going to pass, we're going to pass it. Next resolution.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
We have got our answers, Tracy and I and Adrian can't make a judgment call. What do you want us to do about the pay back to November 8th, because it includes pay and Ohio Police and Fire retirement, and the disability program that we have?
It starts the date that the resolution was signed.
No, it says November 8th on the resolution.
Okay, so we need to change the right new resolution, start of the day, the date the resolution was signed.
Right, but when you going to do that? Because we, you just said, we're not paying.
Well, if I'd had this, maybe if I'd known about that ahead of time, we'd get it done tonight, but you know, Jim, we know how this game is played.
Well, we just got to take care of the employee and do what's right for the employee.
Are we going to have to have a registry meeting?
So make sure you invite me this time.
What are you talking about?
I mean, I never even got a.
You're looking at, you, you, you better not be throwing stones, you live in class house, dude. Is the resolution ready to roll this? The resolution was Mr. Lutz. Who pulls stuff out of your butt at the end of the meeting?
What's your lawyer cleaning up, Mr. McLaughlin?
Okay, so the only thing really needs changed here is the change from the date from November eighth to the date that this was signed.
You can't change a resolution that's been voted upon. Move on.
Yep, we do that. That was tabled. We're not gonna get voted on, vote yes or no, so we're not gonna pass, we're gonna pass it. Next resolution.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
We have got our answers. Tracy and I and Adrian can't make a judgment call. What do you want us to do about the pay back to November eighth, because it includes pay, and Ohio Police and Fire retirement, and the disability program that we have?
It starts the date that the resolution was signed.
No, it says November eighth on the resolution.
Okay, so we need to change the right new resolution, start of the date was, the date of the resolution was signed.
Right, but when you gonna do that? Because we, you just said, we're not paying the guy.
Well, if I'd had this, maybe if I'd known about that ahead of time, we'd get it done tonight, but, you know, Jim, we know how this game's played.
Well, we just gotta take care of the employee and do what's right for the employee.
Are we gonna have to have an emergency meeting?
So make sure you invite me this time. What are you talking about? I mean, I never even got a copy of the resolution after the meeting. You didn't even care enough about your co-trustee.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you throw many stones, you're a big Jim.
Tracy, our payroll was, our end of our payroll was when?
We just got paid last, last week, so it must be this...
Be the end of this week, wouldn't it?
Right.
Alright, so... Trustees, you're gonna have to have an emergency meeting to figure this out. All we can do is produce you potential numbers. But Tracy made up, at another point, it wasn't appropriate this year to have a promotion like that. So we gotta make sure that the appropriation is in the fund. It's in next year's.
It all comes back.
But you didn't adopt that tonight. Lack of teamwork. This is one guy going rogue. And here we are, we gotta clean up his messes. The guy that's sitting up front, being the president of trustees.
McGuire, please, please say that. Please say that. There's so many meetings that you've done similar things, it's not...
Why don't you let him defend himself, Tracy?
No, look, I mean, I'm listening to, I'm listening to you talking about something, calling the kettle to, hot calling the kettle black. That's what I'm listening to.
But the steps Tracy has to do is she has to transfer money if, have to, to cover his additional salaries to the end of the year, so that's step one, in order for us to pay. But you do pay all the way back to November eighth. So we've got several things that we have to do, that I'm aware of, to fix this problem, to finish it before the end of the year. But it has to be done. We can't make the judgment calls. We may pay him the wrong amount of money, but that is not on an employee, and should not be on the fist wall, so it's the vote of the trustees who voted the resolution to start with. So I would say you'd have to have an emergency meeting. Or he's not gonna get paid.
Set one up.
You guys are trustees when you want.
It sounds like Mr. Mann needs to pull each other, be included, too. The two trustees are gonna get this passed, no matter what we do. Passed or not passed, will not be the matter.
Don't we have a reading set for, already set for budgets?
There's plenty left of the close-up, maybe.
Oh, close-ups, two weeks. What are you gonna do, Jim?
Let's see what Mr. Mann's gonna do.
Okay.
You guys just let me know, I'll get it advertised. Please do find it right.